We'll follow the regular meeting of the Moose Lake City Council for September 10th, 2025. We'll start with the pledge allegiance. All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and without any justice or fraud.
Next, move on to the agenda. Is there any additions to the correction city agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Close, carry. Content agenda. We have the regular meeting, regular city council meeting, August 13th, 2025, and the financial reports from the city council table, August 2025, city financial statement, August 2025, and the liquor store profit and loss statement, August 2025. Any questions? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call of favor.
Aye.
Carry. Public comment. This time is reserved for comment from the public. A man is not listed on the agenda. Please keep comments to two minutes. Do you need any? Previously discussed business, or whoops, or department reports, referral to county sheriff's office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So for the August 2025 reports update, as you can see from the report that was provided in your packet, there was 92 total calls for service that were responded to, both including self-initiated activities such as traffic stops, business checks, community engagements, and then our actual calls for service, 911 calls for service and medical calls responded to. 92 of those were responded by county deputies not assigned under a Moose Lake contract, and 94 of those were responded to by contract deputies. Also, we have an update on the contract. You will see as of next week, the third deputy that is assigned under the contract. Unfortunately, he didn't make it in time to be here today, otherwise I would have brought him to introduce it to all of you, but I will hope to bring him to the next council meeting for introductions. But in the meantime, you will see him around town as well. And then the fourth one is finishing up with her field training program and hoping to see her sometime in October, if everything goes well. Any questions?
That's great.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
City superintendent, department report.
Mayor, members of council, Administrator Owens. Starting the water department, there's always 7.8 million gallons of drinking water distributed in the month of August. Hydrant flushing is happening next week. The research pump line and the water tower was taken care of last week. I was no one out, I was aware of no audigence in that whole process. So in order to take a piece of infrastructure out of the equation like we did for the matter of what, three days, and not have the issues, and honestly, nobody really even knowing we were doing it, is pretty good. So that's never a fun position to be in. Sewer department, our collection system collecting 11.5 million gallons of wastewater in the month of August. We're just starting our first fall discharge here in September. Be facilitating that the rest of the month. The treatment facility, I'm still looking at other options for increasing capacity. We're still, that's a big problem for us still. We've gotten a few things we're working on now. Obviously, you see in the budget, that kind of thing, but we're still looking at more and more options that are out there, and I will be attending trainings to see if we come up with some more of those other options. Street department and right-of-way perspective, road patching continually happening here yet for another month or so. Hot Mix plans to be shutting down by then roughly-ish. Right-of-way mowing, clearing, ditching, stormwater cleaning, and then sidewalk repairs are now completed for the year, unless we have some unexpected ones we need to take care of through emergencies. So, other than that, equipment, the 450 cat loader, that was full service last month. The 255 cats deer was fully serviced last month. Just a reminder, in cemeteries, all grave decorations are supposed to be removed by the 15th of September. I know I mentioned that last month, but they will be getting taken down next Monday. Shortly following that, we'll be shutting down the cemeteries for the winter. And then campground, seems to be going good. I know attendance is down a little bit due to, you know, kids being back in school and all that. Everything will be getting shut down and turned off the first week of October. Parks, no mowing or maintenance is pretty much coming to an end. The arena, we got some, we have ice to remove on the 22nd. We'll be putting ice back in on the 29th, so right after Oktoberfest. Other than that, I think we're good, unless anyone has any questions right now.
On the ice, did we check and see what the electric was before and after?
I did not do that, but I can absolutely look into that. Any other questions? Hey, thank you. I mean, this is a liquor store.
Evening, members of the council. Mayor Wachowski, Administrator Owens. Liquor store been very busy. Let's see, get my notes here. Just a reminder, we have Oktoberfest coming up. That's on September 27th. Whiskey River is the headliner, so we are starting to see some people take care of the, or take advantage of the 30% off in the campground. Just a reminder that offer code is October, O-K-T-O-B-E-R, 30, at the end of your checkout process, and you'll get 30% off. Just want to mention that again. We installed some new TVs down there. We had some TVs that just weren't working anymore. We did that before footballs officially started. See, it sounds like stab, and the guests that come in are loving the new TVs, so that's great. We are also working on the sound system down there to get just better sound quality. Marty and I are going over a bunch of capitalized items for next year that you'll see probably next month. Let's see, I gave you a handout about sneak peek for the calendar for December, so just kind of a sneak peek of what we're looking at. In my research, I found that our first official ordinance for the liquor store was December 17th, I believe, and this would be our 90th anniversary for the liquor store. So you'll see that on the calendar too. I'm not sure what we'll do. If we'll do something all month long, anniversary month, or we'll do something on that day, maybe both, but just to keep that in mind, it's 90 years, so that's crazy. Yeah, that's liquor store. Any questions?
Any questions? Technology department.
Yeah, I just closed on a project with VC3 and actually the county for the department down there in regards to connectivity and stuff like that. Nothing really important, no extra expenditures or anything. They're also helping Laura with their front desk library computer is starting to have some issues. It's a computer that I believe, as is just a guess, that was installed maybe by the library director many years ago, and it's not even on the VC3 preventative maintenance schedule. It's not hooked into our infrastructure, so it's something completely separate. It's actually plugged into the Arrowhead Library system, so I have been trying to connect with the Arrowhead Library IT person. I haven't touched base with him yet, but hopefully soon, and we can work that out and how to get that going, because it's really the only computer they have to check people in and out and cover everything, so working on that. That's what I have for IT this month.
Any questions? Finance department.
Finance department. I'm going to start with still working on the Minnesota Pay Leave program that's official in 2026, so there's a health component and then just a different kind of leave component for that. And yes, the council would also receive such, so we'll have some decisions to make, probably with the next council meeting in regards to that. I have also spoken to the Public Safety Officers Benefit Fund Senior Consultants, so that's the reimbursement for a PTSD person. Just to give you guys a heads up, we'll be receiving that a little later than we did last year. They had over 1,500 submissions this time, and she stated most does not have supporting documentation, not ours, so we're good, but we're down a little ways on the list, so it might be a little bit later in the year we receive that reimbursement. And then I have some Labor Day comparisons for you guys. That is in your packet, I believe? Yep. We'll start here with the campground. So with the campground, I know last time that I came in and gave some pro forma type numbers I compared to last year, not really apples to apples, because we made a lot of changes in the campground that would skew things. So I just took a look at the previous week, same days of the week, which also happened to be, you know, a busy summer week, so you can see how Labor Day is at the bottom, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and it outperformed the previous week by quite a bit. And then the liquor store, a little bit of the opposite. I compared that actually to the previous year, because that is more apples to apples, and we actually did a lot of the same thing, because that was a good performing four days for us. Didn't quite perform the way we wanted, but we're not dissatisfied with it. It's just a little bit down from what it was previous year.
Is that in your packet?
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't say liquor stores.
That's the 1111.
It says Labor Day weekend. One of them pages.
So campground is 57, liquor store is 56.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. I do have a library calendar. If you just want me to go over some stuff for Laura. Okay. Let's see. She has storytime Thursdays in October at 2:00 p.m. for everyone. There's a paint party that is on October 25th, so that'll be pretty fun. And then there's some folk music at 1:00 on Tuesday, October 21st. You're welcome.
City engineer, board.
Yes, the city council received in their packet meeting minutes from a coordination meeting with city engineers and QuickTrip regarding the stormwater retention pond located on the QuickTrip property. So general consensus throughout the meeting is that everybody's willing to work together regarding a solution moving forward. So as far as the residential plan is concerned, the first portion of the development will drain from a stormwater perspective into that existing pond, and then as design plans have been shared, there'll be a secondary stormwater retention pond as the development was built out. So we're working through those things and coordinating. The meeting went really well. It was smooth. If you have any questions regarding the meeting minutes, please let me know. Also in the packet was the standard monthly update meeting minutes as well. A couple of items I wanted to point out. The city will engage with the city engineers, administrative staff, the mayor, and Councilor Jutman on a meeting, a coordination meeting with MSOP and DOC on September 11th, tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. So the intent and purpose of that meeting is to discuss the upcoming trunk sewer line rehabilitation project. Just as a reminder to council, that was the MPCA grant that the city has awarded for $658,000. So very exciting about that. In the meeting minutes of projects, a tentative project schedule was shared. We're looking at the meeting tomorrow on September 11th, and then design and bidding documents being prepared throughout the fall. There'll be a need to collect some data and work hand in hand with the facilities regarding location of manholes, inspections, a topo survey, things like that, and then bidding the project hopefully in early January. So more information to come on that, but that is exciting, and those updates are included in those meeting minutes. In addition, the city was contacted by the House of Representatives Capital Finance Committee, and so Moose Lake has been selected as a stop on a bonding bill bus tour based on our submission for a bonding bill request. The request that was submitted for the city is the $3.1 million sewer lining project, and so we will give a short presentation. It's scheduled for October 7th at around 11:20 here at City Hall, and so we'll be working through that with staff and elected officials and our engineers as far as what our presentation looks like. So that's exciting as well. In addition, included in the 2025 budget was a line item associated with a engineering structural report for the Historical Society Building. So we have engaged with a firm called NCE, and what we will be doing is meeting with them on site and starting the process of assessing the structural integrity of the building and what updates need to occur. That was a capital item again in this budget. What we'll be doing then is, once the report is issued, we'll be handing that report off to the Historical Society, which then they can utilize for grants and securing funding for a project to update the building. So a lot of coordination there. That is coming up here in the next coming weeks. And then we have been made aware that ELWRK funding applications are about to open and will be due December 12th. So from a city perspective, staff and engineers and elected officials will kind of be engaging as far as a planning, brainstorming, planning, what do we want our application to look like, what are the priority areas as far as needs, and then making sure that the project that is selected for the application meets the qualifications for the funding. So going through that process as well, the city will be submitting an application for ELWRK funding.
Any questions? Thank you. Moose Lake Chamber of Congress, monthly update.
Members of the council, Mayor Wachowski, Administrator Owens, thank you for having me. Lori Westmoreland. We did have our meeting today and did an update of the summer's activities that we have already completed. We have two fundraisers left for the rest of this year. One of them is our sports raffle, gun raffle sort of. Tickets will be available at the Moose Lake Area Chamber and some of the businesses around town, and we are also, this next week coming up is a bingo that is for adventures, trips and things like that, is what the bingo will be coming up, and that will be at the Barnum Uni on the 19th. We updated, we're about the same as far as our budget is concerned, and yeah, just doing what we have, those last two fundraisers.
Any questions?
Any questions? If anyone's interested in the raffle, I will make sure that Taylor has a copy of the flyer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Previously discussed business, the ordinance amendment update.
Oh, yes. In the council packet, council received updated emails and correspondence between city staff and the city attorneys. So as you can see, we have submitted four of the six prioritized ordinances to the city attorneys. We did have collaborative meetings with them and have continued to correspond back and forth, so they'll be reviewing. They are looking at other city ordinances, state statutes, looking for any recommendations as far as additions into them. Prior to submission, city staff, Taylor specifically, worked hard on formatting and amending to the best of our ability to reduce cost as far as an attorney review and process perspective is concerned. So lots of time and attention to that. We have not received them back yet, but hopefully the council will be, will receive those for review and potential approval.
Any questions?
What four ordinances were these again?
So one was use of city property. I can't remember what number that is, 154 maybe?
154.
Ordinance 131, nuisances. 169, which is cats and dogs, and 170, which is livestock.
Any other questions? Roy Peterson Memorial Park discussion.
Good evening, council, Mayor Wachowski, Administrator Owens. Just as a reminder, we have engaged with the Essential Health Foundation in doing a restoration of one of the state parks. They have committed $10,000 a year for the next three years, and they would like to focus on the Roy Peterson Memorial. We have already, at the last meeting, approved the repaving of the basketball court that is scheduled to occur next week, so that's fantastic. At the park board meeting on Monday, we brought quotes for the basketball hoop and striping, and the park board has recommended to go with RTA for the striping, which came out to be $1,750, which is less than the other quote from Senate laptop at $3,000. And then we presented two options for basketball hoops. Finance Director McKean is actually the boys varsity basketball coach, so he was able to provide some insight as to what would be, as to what would be good, and he has recommended the Mega Slam hoop that came in at $3,149, which is more expensive than the one from Willie Goat, but the other one is not quite as good quality, and we're hoping that this is going to last us a while. Just something to keep in mind is that number does not include installation. I have not heard back from the company that they partnered with on Starz install. However, the paving quotes came in at $10,000. The city was going to contribute $10,000, so even if we go with the Mega Slam hoop at $3,149 and the striping at $1750, we still have some money left over in that $10,000 budget to put towards installation. So looking for a motion to approve RTA striping for $1750 and the Mega Slam hoop for $3,149.
How many questions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes. Senate says that they use durable latex paint, and this other one doesn't say that. Are we comparing apples with apples on the striping?
I do not know about paint. Is that something that you're knowledgeable about, Philip?
There's quite a difference, and if we're going to be approving a motion to stripe it if it's not going to last, I think that we should at least be making sure that it's the same product.
What's the one?
Is that on the, I don't have my computer up here.
No, carry.
I'm not seeing one.
Maybe I will amend my motion to make sure that is the same type of paint, and if there's an additional charge, then we need to revisit that.
Include the installation as well?
Yes.
Do you second that?
I did.
Do you second her amendment?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Call of favor.
Aye.
Close, carry. City campground ATV discussion.
Yes, so after some discussion at last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago, about ATVs that were maybe not following traffic laws coming out of the city campground, we have amended our check-in and reservation form on Camp Spot to include, it's mandatory that they answer whether or not they have any recreational vehicles that they're bringing with, and if they answer yes, they must provide make, model, and license plate numbers, so that we have an inventory of all recreational vehicles that are being brought into the campground during their stay. I haven't heard, it was kind of late in the season that we implemented this, so I haven't really heard from Steve how that's going, but hopefully we can, over the last couple of weeks of camping season, figure out if that's working, and then make sure that we're sticking to that next year.
In addition, in the council packet, there was some materials that we've gathered that we will have available to share in the campground as far as maps are concerned, and also the OHV regulations that, from the DNR. So we will have different print materials available for staff and campers as well in the campground, and then the terms and conditions were also updated on.
Yeah, so those materials are included in the terms and conditions, so when they check, I have read the terms and conditions. They're also saying I've read these laws, the state laws and the DNR laws.
Is there a map of Moose Lake, of just the town? You know, I see that you have these maps here for the Sewer Line Trail north and for the South Trail, but is there a map of just town that would show the trail, the best way to make it to the trail from the campground, something of that nature?
I can look and see what we've got, and if we don't have one, I'm sure it's something that could be generated somehow.
And then I see that they got the ATV rules and regulations in here, but does the city of Moose Lake have any rules and regulations that wouldn't be in this information that we could possibly like put on a map of just Moose Lake, you know, like the?
Our ordinance, our ATV.
Like where they're allowed to drive, you know, and stuff like that?
For sure.
And maybe some like language, like, you know, do your riding on the trails and not in town and that, and?
I'm also not sure. I can't remember the last time I read our ATV ordinance, if it included golf carts or not. And that was the question that, maybe you asked me that. I can't remember. Somebody asked me that today, and I said, I don't know. I'll have to look into that. So golf carts is something that's on my radar as well.
Also, we were asked about e-bikes and scooters, and so as it's evolving, there's going to be more work to it. Just wanted to provide an update that a significant amount of progress has been made, and we can continue to work through other items as well.
Chris?
Well, I think the difference between some of those is some are licensed for the road and some, so, you know, that's stuff we need to take into consideration too. But the fastest way to get to the trail from the campground is to come out there, take the right, and go home to the, and my understanding with people that live in town, to get to the trail, you're supposed to use the most direct route to the trail, but I don't think it's really people that live in town that are using. I think it's people that come up and stay in the campground that either one don't know where to go, or, you know, I don't know. But I see you do have the ordinance on here, so thank you for that one.
Any other questions? Old school playground discussion.
All right, I'm ready. As requested, this just came in a couple hours ago. It's a big packet. There's a lot of information on here to digest, but this is our playground safety inspection report, so there are some immediate action items on here, but I think it's only fair to give you guys, you know, some time to digest all of this, us as well as admin team. So maybe in the next, there could be a need for a special city council meeting here coming up, so maybe we can just add this to the agenda. up, so maybe we can just add this to the agenda at that point. But what I would ask is, as you guys review it, if there are questions that come up about the report or questions for me, I could get it to the company prior to such a meeting, so we can have the answers for that meeting, and then we're not spinning our tires. So I guess that's what I think we should do, because it's up to you guys. If you want to talk about it now or digest it, send me your questions, and I'll try to get the answers as best I can.
Any comments?
I'm gonna definitely want some time to review it.
Yep, sixty-some pages in here, so.
I do see there are some hazards all, and then, as sooner we could review this stuff, the better.
Yep. Yeah, I would ask this week for sure, that you guys give me any questions you have.
All right. Thank you. New business cannabis retail license discussion.
Yes, so in the council, the, or in the packet, the council received a snippet of the city's fee schedule. With that, line items pertinent to applications and fees for registration and annual renewal were incorporated into the city's fee schedule. These fee amounts align with the ordinances that the city has passed regarding cannabis, and also align with other areas as far as research and assessment of what the fee structures look like in, in similar cities. And so we are looking to approve this fee schedule as it, as presented, and then we'll be reviewing this, the city's first license application.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Volistic Wellness Services cannabis license application.
Yes, so in the city council packet, council received our first cannabis license application. Some things that have transpired in the background, the city engaged from a zoning perspective through the Office of Cannabis Management. There is a portal which requests that the city confirm that an applicant is within the proper zoning district of the, you know, pertinent to city ordinance and city zoning. And so that process was completed, that was a portal experience that I myself, as a zoning administrator, was able to take care of. And then the second phase of this is the city having an application. So city staff worked, worked on creating an application. Again, a lot of assessment occurred with other cities, other areas, the counties' application, things like that. And so all of that work collectively went into creating this particular application. And then we did receive our first one. And so looking for city council approval and/or discussion regarding the application.
Is there any questions?
I think I just have a statement, I just like, as stated before, I would like to keep this contained or smaller, if possible, and I think that we have a business in town that has shown that they're professional and that they're doing a good job of keeping, I think, younger people out of there, and we haven't had any complaints, and I'd like that it's this application I'm getting.
Any other comments, questions?
In, in response to Councilor Judd's statement, so the, the way our structure is set up is the city has elected to be the licensing authority, so there was the opportunity for the city to deflect authority to the county. And so as the city has engaged from a municipal perspective, any applications will come before council.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. City of Moose Lake 2024 audit presentation.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is David Early, I'm with West Productions. We completed the audit for the 2024 year, I initiated a report on that. So I just have a, just a few things to go over, trying to give you a high-level look of, of the audit. So the first thing I want to just look at is the handout that says the audit findings. If you look at the first page, we're looking at 2024-001. This is a, a common finding, obviously you're not a huge city, you don't have a huge department that does all the accounting, so we typically would issue a finding saying that you don't have full segregation of duties. However, we do say it's a significant deficiency, not something that's a material weakness. If we say it's a material weakness, we think you need to take action, make changes. We just say that since it's significant, just to make you aware of that, which obviously everyone probably is already on that. And then the, the next finding, the 002, is a very common finding also. The auditor preparing your financial statements, typically that's a finding just because you don't have someone in-house that can handle the full thing. But again, we understand the, the size of the entity, and then also just the expertise it takes to do it. And, and again, this is a significant deficiency, not a material weakness. And then the, the third finding, we had proposed numerous adjustments, and our recommendation on there is just probably just to change some year-end procedures. You know, the cash account is able to be reconciled somewhat electronically through the system, but a lot of the other accounts in the trial balance are basically a manual reconciliation. So just asking to look at some of those things and establish some procedures to make sure things are correct on that. But overall, really nothing earth-shattering or anything. As part of the audit, we also looked at compliance with Minnesota legal statutes and so forth. There's a few things the auditor, state auditor wants us to look at. We didn't find any issues on that, we did not issue any findings relating to compliance findings with Minnesota, so that, that's a good job on that side of things, so. The other handout, I'm not going to go over really, the one that says required communications, that is pretty much a standard, standard letter, just explaining a few things about the audit. If there was something specific that I would add to it, I would point that out to you, but otherwise, it's basically just general information for your information, so. And then the other handout I'd like to go over is the one that's called financial trends. This one just kind of gives you a snapshot, a graphic of essentially what the funds have done the last four years. That's kind of helpful to see if there's any negative or positive trends. So on page one, we're looking at just the general fund. If you look at three out of the last four years, revenues exceeding expenditures, which is a very positive sign. And as you can see, 2023 and 2024, your cash balance has increased. And so you ended the year at 3.2 million. In that fund also, you're collecting sales tax, and you have a, part of that money set aside for sales tax projects. You ended the year at 1.24 million earmarked for sales tax projects only out of that 3.2 million. Any comments or questions on that?
Is that what's left there now? Is there's that much left for projects?
Correct, yep. And it's, it's carried over, it built up obviously in '24 because you didn't have any projects that used any of the funding. Thank you. Page two, another significant, significant fund for you is the water fund. I guess if you want to look at trends on that one, you can see that from '21 to '24, the cash balance has been increasing, which means that you are operating sufficiently, you're covering your debt payments, and no real issues as far as the way it looks on that fund. And again, if you look at 762,000 in the bank, if you compare that with what you typically spend, obviously you have a good amount of reserves for your operating for the next year and your debt service payments, so. And then the, the third page, looking at the sewer fund, you know, sewer fund has a large amount of depreciation, so it always looks like it's operating at a really significant loss, but it's really not a cash outlay. You know, you've had huge improvements in the past, the depreciation expense is very significant, about 260,000 per year is what makes up the, some of the operating expenses. So as you can see, you know, the cash balance really hasn't been fluctuating that much, so that means that you are operating sufficiently, making enough to make debt payments and so forth. And again, 1.1 million cash, significant enough for covering future expenditures, so. And then the last one, we're looking at the liquor store fund, obviously another significant fund for you. It's obviously been operating quite well, as you can see, the cash balance has been building up every year, and the profitability has been maintained pretty well. You know, out of the last four years, you look, the gross profit typically about 33, 32 to 33 percent, so very consistent on that really overall, so. And you know, currently, I know you don't have any, you don't budget for any transfers out of that fund, ideally that, you know, that fund would continue on and actually provide source of funding for other programs if needed, so.
Do you have a recommendation as far as a cash balance in the liquor fund for establishing a basis prior to utilizing it for transfers?
Yeah, I mean, really, with the liquor store fund, since it's operating continuously, you're collecting all the time, right? So, you know, if you think about having enough for six to nine months of operating expenses, that would be sufficient. And then obviously, if you have any capital needs in the future, that you need to set some money aside for, you know, having something with that, but otherwise, it is operating pretty well at this point.
I find it interesting, quite a big jump in gross profit there in that '22, the '23 area. Interesting.
You do have reads?
Shameless.
My own first day was rocking '22, '23, big jump. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions on anything? Otherwise, you do have a copy of the financial statements, you know, good sixty, another sixty-some pages to read through, you know, in line with the other documents. But always lots of good information there too, you know, and obviously, it's budget season, so it's kind of good to look at.
Any questions?
Well, thank you so much. Can you move to the office people first?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Moose Lake gravel pit discussion.
I think it is, yeah, that's where I was told, I need to get up there. What do we have?
Gravel pit.
So a little update for council, the city has engaged in some testing, materials testing, since we've last met. And so we were able to kind of hone in as far as the areas that have very rich material. That is helping us guide within coordination with our city engineers, a plan of action as far as where to start mining, so to speak. And so we are working through that. We have presented council with the SWIP plan that the engineers worked with city staff on to formulate, and we've made some amendments based on the testing, because the SWIP outlines a plan of action and a, a course as far as where, where we will start and where we will go. So that is an update, what has happened in the background. In addition, Superintendent Edner has gotten some quotes. You'll see in the packet, there are two sets of quotes, they are for two separate functions, and can be awarded independently of one another. So the first is for site preparation and clearing, striping and mining. And, and then the other set of quotes is for the crushing and mining.
Yep.
Any gravel pit questions in general?
Well?
So they're going to crush 21,000 tons of gravel. Do we have any idea on how much, like say Fourth Street, this last project we did? Do we know how many tons of gravel that we used on a project like that? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how much 21 tons.
Sure. Not off the top of my head, but I do definitely find that information out, because we do have unit pricing and measurements that we use for that project.
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking at is like wondering how much, how, how many projects would you be able to do with 21,000 tons?
Don't, that makes total sense.
Any other questions?
Another thing to mention is, we did just hear, one thing that was prioritized from an audit perspective is giving the sales tax fund balance. And so now that we have that through the end of 2024, as soon as we have more information over the next couple of months about the mining at the gravel pit and the amount of materials, we can start to utilize that information to plan the next road project. So how much materials can we get that reduces the cost, and then do we have enough in the sales tax fund? So these are all questions that council has brought forward in the last six to nine months as we were building the sales tax fund up, and we're almost at a point where we can present options for the next road project. So getting really close, and that's what all this work in the background has kind of attributed to.
I will add, the 21,000 tons is a minimum. They, most, most companies will not mobilize into a site and do anything less than that, just to the volume. We can add as much as we want to this, as, as much as we want, they just run longer, that's all they do. But this is just their baseline minimum pricing.
If we were to approve this, when would this begin, and when would they have this material ready?
The striping portion would happen this fall, mining would probably happen early summer.
Any other questions?
I would just make a statement, is that's what we have the property for.
Yeah.
And that's what we have the money for. And the purpose is to have the money and have this ready to go for the next project and save 30 percent on this project.
Correct.
Yeah, that's excellent news.
Not to mention, these numbers came in considerably cheaper than we originally anticipated.
So we do have over $300,000 in the gravel pit fund. It is now restricted, so it will only be utilized for, for these intensive purposes. And then, as we'll talk about later on in the presentation, any monies in that fund that are not utilized for these two activities will then continue to build, because there'll be a need moving forward to, to mine again. And so in the budget, we've incorporated just a small amount of money to continue to plug the gravel pit fund, to then rebuild up that balance or, or within the fund to then be able to continue this process on a consistent basis.
Where did this funding come from again, the 300,000?
So it's a combination of unutilized capital in 2024 or '23, 2024. And then we consulted elect to utilize savings from the police department project in order to facilitate gravel pit fund, the gravel pit fund.
Thank you.
We've remunerated a portion of monies in '23 as well, did we not?
There was also one, one year of a $50,000 capital contribution within the city's budget. So, so public works, unspent capital, savings from capital within the general fund, and then savings within the police department is what was utilized to create the gravel pit fund.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Or motion for the site preparation quotes?
I'll make a motion to accept Googol excavating for the site preparation quote for 124,972.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Now, is there a motion for the mining quotes?
I'll make that motion too, that we accept Ron Pond paving.
Bocon.
Bocon? For 99,750.
Second.
Any further discussion? These are apples, apples.
Yep.
Bits. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Next, we have lead, Minnesota Lead Service Line Inventory Project.
So Superintendent Edner and myself have been coordinating with the city engineers regarding a lead service line inventory project. And so there's a, a collaboration with the state. The state is issuing funding to engineer groups and cities in order to get an assessment of service line, service lines for lead in communities across the state. So are the public? So our, the public works department had done a significant inventory of infrastructure when there was other activities with some camps. So a lot of our work was done, but there was still a need to engage on a little over a hundred services that were unknown at the time. So we've, the project is fully funded through the state, the city engineers are engaged, the meeting agenda was incorporated into the packet, and also what council, what we wanted council to have visibility to is the types of communications that are going to be going out to those little over a hundred residents and/or businesses to establish what their service line is comprised of. So it's a two-fold approach. They'll be getting a mailer that they can then utilize the QR code to have access to an online portal. Screenshots from the portal were included in the packet. Essentially, there's going to be directions for these residents to go in and try and determine by following the step-by-step instructions whether or not their service has lead within it.
Self-identify.
Self-identify. If they would, they don't want to self-identify, there is an option through that portal then to just schedule for an engineer to come to their home. And so they will have the opportunity, takes ten to fifteen minutes, they will have scheduling preferences and options within that portal to then just have somebody come in and do it for them. So it's a, it's a short window, there's a huge push, so we have until the end of October. And so kind of be fast and furious, again, it's only pertinent to about a little over a hundred residents, but we'll be working through that. So if there's questions, we will have a post on the city's social media in addition to the city's website with information. People can call city, the city and ask questions, and we'll do our best to help guide and partner with the engineers through this inventory process.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, on that hundred and sixty, you said we're going to be doing something through Water and Light or through Billing to let those hundred and six residents know, is that the plan?
So Water and Light has provided the information that the engineers needed in order to send out the mailer. So we're trying to, yep, so we're trying to limit like city resources going into this, but also be collaborative, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Just an update, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Municipal liquor store application for temporary on-sale license.
Uh, yes, so as Finance Director McKean has spoken about previously, this is a process that other entities go through as far as a temporary on-sale license request to council. There's mixed information about whether or not the city needs to do it for their own municipal, but general consensus through the liquor committee and city administrative staff as we might as well. And so this is a permit for our own municipal liquor store for Oktoberfest happening on September twenty-seventh.
Any comments or questions?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Motor Vehicle Department.
In the council packet, there is a resignation, just looking for formal approval of the resignation.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried.
I'm abstaining.
Chris is abstaining.
Thank you.
Uh, job posting discussion.
So with the resignation, we do have a need to post for a part-time licensed clerk in the Motor Vehicle Department, just looking for council's approval. The post will be the same as to what went out within the last six months as far as the last posting is concerned, and so we'll go through that hiring process once again.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We, we had interviews with people, is it the consensus, I guess, of city administration that there wasn't another qualified candidate in the pool? Is that the reason to do that?
Um, so I, I think there were other candidates that were potentially qualified. It's my understanding that the deputy registrar reached out and did some, some, some work there, and then there's a need to repost at this time.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to repost the position? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining again. Uh, preliminary budget for two thousand twenty-six, initial property tax levy.
Yes, so the city council is tasked with setting an initial property tax levy prior to September thirtieth. What that entails is review of the general fund departments, expenditures and revenues. As previously communicated to council, the next steps will be revealing enterprise funds, and so we've actually already been working on that and capital's pretty set too, but we'll handle those a different night. We didn't know what it would be like with our audit presentation as well. So tonight we'll focus on the general fund. Again, these are just preliminary numbers, so it's important to know that, or you know, to be aware that things can change and shift throughout the course of the next month, couple of months. Of course, council sets the final levy in December. Any questions after this presentation, please feel free to reach out to city staff. There's a ton of work that's gone into this, we have a lot of moving pieces and some really good information to share with council. So, getting right into it, just some, some notables from an expenditure standpoint. There will be an election in twenty-twenty-six, so we did have to add an election budget back in to the twenty-twenty-six preliminary budget of the general fund. In addition, there is an operating transfer out of the general fund in the amount of fifty thousand dollars incorporated to the DMV in the twenty-twenty-six budget. The budget includes a five percent wage increase for hourly non-contract city staff, and there's also an electric utility rate savings of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars included in the twenty-twenty-six budget. That is our partnership with Water and Light and our commitment to the residential development moving forward. From a revenue perspective, the auditors just shared that we've been building up that sales tax fund. We are looking at a revenue budget of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for sales tax in twenty-twenty-six. Historically, we've kept it right around two twenty-five, but revenues have been coming in right around that two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty dollar amount from an annual basis, we've felt comfortable bumping up slightly. Local government aid has increased three thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars for a total of one million one hundred twenty-five dollar, one hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars in twenty-twenty-six. Campground revenue is incorporated within the general fund revenues, an amount of two hundred thousand dollars is included in the twenty-twenty-six preliminary budget. And then also incorporated in the budget for the first time is the duty disability reimbursement. And because that process occurred, we now have a figure that we can utilize and incorporate. Notable, that's not promised year to year, and so I'll share the administrative perspective on what occurred with those monies, but that is incorporated in the budget for a hundred and eighteen thousand in twenty-twenty-six.
Question. So that local government aid, was there a fear that that was going to go down at one point?
It's, it's very possible that it still will. This is a very minimal increase. We've seen more significant increases year over year, so there's always the potential for that to, to decrease. So we were pretty consistent year over year, but that is a concern, and it still is a concern for subsequent years.
Do we know when that decision would be made, when we find out that information?
So these figures have been released from a state perspective for twenty-twenty-six, we're locked in through twenty-twenty-six. Where we might see an adjustment would then be twenty-twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question on the duty disability, if I may. The one nineteen K, as you said, is not guaranteed.
Correct.
Is that for three work comp claims? Is that working anyway?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One more question.
Sorry.
Campground revenue, two hundred K, was it at a hundred and thirty last year?
No, it was at... I knew I was gonna get questions. It was right around two hundred thousand last year. Yep, it was right around two hundred thousand, so it's, it's been about that for two years. We did bump it up last year from a hundred and eighty up to two. We are seeing it, like right now, we are at right about two hundred thousand, we still have a month's worth of reservations to come in from any additional reservations that are made throughout the month of September. So we felt comfortable, you know, we're always trying to budget revenues just a little low and expenditures just a tad bit high to make sure that we stay in that, in that, in the safe zone for both.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Especially for Oktoberfest. Don't forget folks watching at home.
Promo code.
Promo code, November thirtieth.
Did you have time to get that promo code one more time?
It's actually going on the radio here soon, so.
All right. This particular administration's been working very hard over the last couple of years to kind of fine-tune the budget to represent exactly what's occurring and trying to have information be readily available for decision-making. And so another, you know, swing went through this year, I think we're just getting a little better and better every year. I think it's important to mention that there's been an effort to kind of bring in a lot of facilitating process contracts, things like that through the administration. And so a lot of the, a lot of those activities and monies in order to keep the department budgets, budgets pretty fluent have come back into general government and city administration. That's been intentional in trying to make sure that we're, these other budgets can be fluid and the administrative budgets are handling the majority of those types of activities, process, facilitation, contracts, things like that. So if you're ever interested in what's in any particular department from a line item perspective, we have a wonderful spreadsheet we can share, and I have that information for you. Moving forward, so from, for the general fund, general government budget for twenty-twenty-six is five hundred and fifteen thousand. The city council budget is forty-three thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Expenditures for city admin, administration is three hundred and seventy-four thousand. There's an elections budget that has been added in for twenty-twenty-six at five thousand five hundred. The community center budget is at forty-seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Preliminary budget for the police department expenditures in twenty-twenty-six is seven hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars. Building inspector budget for twenty-twenty-six, twenty-six thousand. Public works is sitting at four hundred forty-five thousand fifty dollars. And recycling at nineteen thousand one hundred dollars. I do think it's important to mention that these figures do not include capital, so capital will be presented after. These are operating expenditures minus capital for each of these departments. Moving along, for the Vigo, the twenty-twenty-six preliminary budget is six thousand dollars. Parks and Recreation is one hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars. Gardens is twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Library is one hundred and three thousand four hundred dollars. Cemetery is seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Cable TV is fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. And the First National Bank Arena Department preliminary budget for twenty-twenty-six is one hundred eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I do wanna add with that, we are within five thousand dollars from a budget perspective of breaking even within the arena department. That's been a primary goal of staff, we're right within five thousand dollars at this point in time. Again, expenditures are budgeted a little high and revenues a little low. So one thing that's not incorporated because it's brand new is digital sign revenues. And so at a previous council meeting, the city council approved rates for digital sign advertising on the arena. We're hoping that that in combination with continuing to utilize it for community events and things like that will continue to build revenues. So our goal is now, we are within five thousand dollars, I'm really curious to see how it shakes out in twenty-twenty-four, or excuse me, twenty-twenty-five and again in twenty-twenty-six. So lots of progress made on that particular department. The next page has preliminary capital requests per department. And so we are looking at the proposition of adding five additional sewer sites in the campground for twenty thousand dollars. That has come forward as a prioritization with park board and city staff. And those discussions have come from an analysis and assessment. Taylor has put a ton of work into, into those activities. And so it is, it is our belief that by adding sewer sites at the campground will increase revenues in the campground as well, and so that's been prioritized as a project. From a library perspective, there is the need for two workstations, Ryan did touch on that earlier, and so for two workstations, and we're looking at exterior building sign as well. The residential development contribution of a hundred and eighty thousand. The gravel pit savings of fifteen thousand, we're looking at, hoping to make that an annual commitment and have, our, might change as far as what the recommendation might be, but some type of annual commitment to the gravel pit in order to make sure that when there's a need to crush and mine again, that there's monies within the fund to do that without having to take an extreme lump sum at any given time. So the recommendation at this point in time is a fifteen thousand dollar contribution. We know we have more than enough based on what the quotes have come in, but just continuing to build that fund. From a public works perspective, we have a significant need for a couple of garage doors. So there's a thirty thousand dollar budget allotment for garage doors. We have added an additional full-time employee within the department, and so we're looking at purchasing a truck for fifty thousand dollars. And we have had significant repairs to some of our equipment, and there's a need for a dump truck at eighty thousand dollars. From a community center perspective, there is a one rooftop, rooftop unit needed remaining, and that is for twenty thousand dollars. We've been on an annual journey for five, six years to replace all of the units up on top of the roof. This is the final one. And then there are money set aside as far as some restoration activities within the community center. So, you know, paint, carpet, some tables, chairs are needed. There's some exterior paint on this backside that never occurred when the front of the building was painted, and so we're looking at trying to make sure some of those activities happen in, in twenty-twenty-six that are much needed. The historical society is needed some sprinkler work, that is a two thousand dollar commitment within the general fund budget. And the arena, we do have a need for some glass replacement, too Plexiglas, in a commitment of ten thousand dollars, and then the potential for an exterior, some maintenance and painting on the exterior as well. Twenty-twenty-six general fund capital project total is five hundred and two thousand dollars. And then looking at the general fund in totalities, so from a preliminary budget perspective, revenues are coming in at three million two hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars for twenty-twenty-six. Operating expenses are coming in at two million seven hundred four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Capital expenses are five hundred and two thousand. For a total expenditure, line item of three million two hundred six thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which nets an income of forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Where the revenues are being calculated from will make more sense on the next page. And so in twenty-twenty-six, the net tax capacity... And so in 2026, the net tax capacity has increased. With that increase of net tax capacity at the same tax rate as last year, the city nets an additional $47,057. So that is at a 0% rate increase. The net tax capacity accommodates an additional $47,000. Council can see within the presentation, the history of the, you know, the tax rate over time and how consistent it's been. In addition, on the left-hand side, there is a levy breakdown that gives council visibility to last year's levy. The proposed amount based on a 0% rate increase, which is the $1,144,505, which nets the additional $47,057. And then so on and so forth. So you can see that as a rate increase occurs from 1%, 2%, 3% and on, what additional monies over last year would be brought forward to the city. Keep in mind, it's right about $15,000 in addition with every percentage rate increase. And that is consistent all the way up. Again, as a notable, the revenues that were just presented to council were calculated using the 0% levy rate increase resulting in that net income of $43,450. In the middle of the page, I did want council to have visibility to, again, a 0, 1, 2, and 3%. So the levy amounts in totality are on the bottom in the total section. And then what you see on the right-hand side is the bond payments. One significant event that occurred between 2025 and 2026 is we paid off two lines of debt through the general fund, which has then resulted in there being operating, more operating monies or expenditures for the city.
Over the two lines that we were able to write off.
So the 2020A bond was paid in 20, was paid in 2025. And then 20, the 2014A bond, we have, our principal and interest payments have subsided, but we still have a fee, a fiscal agent fee of $500 on the 2014A. So we were paying, it was right about $150,000 a year that we were making in bond payments that have, were paid off in 2025, which is very significant.
Any questions?
On the next page, wanted council to have additional visibility to the levy amounts on a dollar figure, the increase fire from year to year. And the percentage increase is on the right-hand side. As requested historically, there is a figure that represents what the rate increase, the home impact by value with a 1% rate increase. And that is, that is very approximate, that is the best we can do based on home value. And what that would look like. And what was present, or what is, what the visual has is a 1% and 3%, just for visibility. Just to give council an idea of what those look like on a monthly basis for.
Any questions? We make a motion on what we want to set the levy at, max we can set the levy at for the year.
Correct.
Is there a recommendation?
Council?
Because it always can go down, it can't go up.
I'll make a motion that it's at the maximum, like 3%.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Thank you for the presentation.
Jim?
Yes?
Can I mention something I forgot to mention in my report?
Yes.
I just got notified that I forgot to talk about it. The yard waste site, the expend hours this fall, I forgot all about that. Last year, we did an expenditure at a time. This year, those hours will be the same as last year. They'll run the last, the first three weekends in October, so Saturday the 4th, Sunday the 5th, nine to five. On Saturday, one to four, on Sunday. October 10th, sorry, 11th through October 12th. Saturday's hours, nine to five, and Sunday, one to four. October 18th through October 19th, Saturday hours, nine to five, and Sunday, one to four.
Yep. Thank you.
promo code October 30.
Hampspot.com.
Can we use it?
Next we go, the reports of correspondence. We have the weather from Minnesota Department of Education. Strictly a minimum local support requirement. League Minnesota Cities, Mac membership due correspondence. Minnesota House of Representatives Capital Investment Committee visit request correspondence. And any board meeting minutes, the roadside park protection minutes from August, parks and rec minutes from September 8th. Announcements, the next regular city council meeting will be October 8th. 2025 at 4:00 PM here. Luslake Acton Land Development Authority, Wednesday, September 17th. At 12:00 PM in the city conference room. Water Light Commission, Tuesday, September 16th, 1:00 PM, the Water Light Office. Luslake City Redevelopment Authority, Monday, October 13th, 11:00 AM, Hillside Manor. Luslake Park Protection District, Tuesday, October 14th, 6:30 PM, Emergency Response Center. And Luslake Park and Rec Board, Monday, October 6th, 5:00 PM, City Council会议室. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, we are adjourned.